All right, well, I see five o'clock, so I'll call this board of selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, May 12. Roll call, we have Eric Gasperini present, Pam Alley.
Present.
Phil Crossman.
Present.
Donald Poole.
President.
And is Jake Thompson there?
Present.
And all right, proven sign treasures warrant number forty-five, so moved.
Second.
It's been seconded by Donald Poole. Call for a vote, Eric Gasperini votes yes, Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Pamela Alley?
Yes.
Donald Poole?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
All right, approve agenda. For the time being, we've already done the election clerk appointments, then we'll wait for those minutes until our next more regular meeting, so for the time being, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Donald Poole, Eric Gasperini votes yes, Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Pamela Alley?
Yes.
Donald Poole?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
All right, and new business, discussion about use of town properties during the COVID-19 pandemic.
I did send with the links to log in today, it should have been a PDF of a few things that I was just hoping to share with you guys on what the CDC is saying and what's out there for guidance on a few of our kind of public access points, the restroom down at the parking lot, as we discussed, the playground, Armbrist Till and the quarries, those were some of the more particular ones that we started to talk about at the last meeting. I don't know if did folks have a chance to review any of that or have general questions on that?
I reviewed it. Yeah, I reviewed it as well, have people been trying to use the playgrounds recently, or is this just trying to get out ahead of things?
I mean, I think it's just recognizing that the weather is getting nicer and I mean, the playground's a little bit different than the quarries, but in terms, you know, in a lot of ways, in use included, but I think it's just generally as things get nicer, as people are outside even more and more people might be coming. You know, at the very least, you know, the suggestion would be for signage at some of the parks and at the quarries and the playground. The recommendation or guidance from the CDC and suggestion would is still to have you know, things like the playgrounds closed, where some of some of those surfaces, depending on the material, you know, can harbor the virus longer than others. And so if it's not being cleaned at all, you know, there's there is a chance or a risk, even though it's outside. But I'm not, I can't really speak to, you know, how many people have or are using it.
Well, didn't we discuss putting signs just saying clock the park or the playground is closed and not that people care, but they might still use the playground, but even still, if we put a sign that says, you know, at the, how many paths there are that lead there, I know there are two ways to get into that playground up the Owen Webster playground, we could just put some signage there. Would that be helpful in any way?
Yeah, I think at a minimum, I think that's probably the the best thing that we can offer is just some education on, you know, some of the concern and you know, what what people could or should be doing while they're there or not doing. So I was estimating signs at any of those places. By the time you get the sign made, get it here, and the the cost of the post estimating about seventy-five bucks a piece could be a little bit lower. It was assuming that we'd be looking up signs potentially, I'm just trying to give you an idea of what the cost might be to, you know, put those in specific to this and track those costs separately.
Well, I don't think we want to go overboard on any, you know, from a financial point of view, but certainly if it's going to be helpful in any way, a couple hundred bucks isn't gonna how much ever, isn't gonna be too much, I don't, I don't feel.
No.
No, I'm not concerned about the cost and that. These would essentially just be signs giving people information on if they decide to use like the playground that there's a chance that they could catch or spread the disease.
Right.
Basically, use use the facilities at their own risk, essentially.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. That seems pretty, you know, logical.
So on the, so we'll work on getting those made, on the quarry, quarry use, nothing through the CDC is suggesting that the virus is likely or high risk to be transmitted through the water. You know, as people swim, you know, the things they point out as of concern would be just the general gatherings. You know, out of place like the quarry and the only really common touch area at the quarries would be the hand railings down to the lower portions. You know, so swimming in of itself is not something that is seen as a high risk, it's just some of those other parts of being there.
Exactly. And that's, that's just gonna be a hard one to come, to have any control over, I mean, social distancing is the biggest thing that we need to do. And that's gonna be hard to do up there.
Even if even if we're heading into a regular summer, we were talking about trying to enforce the new ordinance, you know, no drinking or smoking at the quarry, that in itself would have been tough to regulate. I don't know how we're gonna be able to keep people from going to the quarries. Again, it's gonna have to be, I mean, it's kind of already stated because there's no lifeguard on duty, so if you go to the quarry, you know, you're doing it at your own risk, so signage that says something similar that points out what Andy mentioned about you less likely to get it, you know, through the water or not at all, he's not that aware of, but if you can practice social distancing while you're at the quarry, then have at it.
Yeah, I do have a call to the sheriff's office as well, just to, I mean, everything I've understood from Knox County Sheriff has been with a focus on education, you know, about the the orders that have come down and how to how people should be acting in public, so I am waiting to follow up, I have to follow up tomorrow with the sheriff on that. You know, should, you know, should there start to be gatherings at places, whether it's the parking lot around an event, or whether it's at the quarries on any given day? You know, how is it that we can expect Knox County to respond and work with us on, you know, some of that education beyond our signage or beyond having, you know, a volunteer or a staff member, you know, go and try and do the same?
Do you know what other towns are doing for signage, like, I'm just thinking over in Rockland, that Chickawaki Lake, are they just closing that, or are they kind of keep it open, you know, where they have the little swimming area by the park thing there by the golf course, or do you have any idea what other towns are doing?
I don't generally, I follow the ICMA listserv and there's some good ideas on there generally about, you know, reopening places and businesses, but I can reach out to, I didn't think about that swimming hole there, so I can reach out to them and see, you know, what they're doing. I did try and follow like some state parks in other states, just to see what they had, the National Park Service similarly, just to see how they are, and I was having a hard time this afternoon quickly finding something that wasn't a pool or chlorinated. You know, some were suggesting there was a difference there, I mean, a lot of it is all around just a large gathering, so I can follow up with some of the other local spots, as you mentioned.
Yeah, I mean, if if there's like a river or something or the ocean, there's plenty of, you know, flow, so I wouldn't think that would be a big deal, I would just, the quarry's just kind of stagnant water, it's different than what some towns are dealing with with, you know, even if it was a lake or a river, they usually have an overflow, with us, with the quarries, seems like it's a kind of a unique situation, I don't know where we'd find comparable in people, but I mean, Chickawaki seems like it might be, I don't know that there's a lot of flow there, so maybe see what Rockland's doing.
Well, I don't worry about the quality of the water, so as it as it stated, the, it's not gonna, you know, the water's gonna be fine. The virus won't, it's not a waterborne virus, but I think like for some of these places, they have local police force that's gonna enforce whatever they decide to do. We don't have that. You know, for the social distancing or or even if you had to close the course, we don't have anybody to just don't have the police enforcement.
Yeah, that's the thing, we don't have any way to enforce, even if we decided to close, there's no way, how are we gonna do that?
Right.
Well, yeah, I mean, short of short of hiring people generally just to be there, if things, you know, if people aren't able to voluntarily, you know, stay within those guidelines, you know, if it starts to get out of hand, I mean, your only real option would be to somehow compel the sheriff's office to help, but also even think about just hiring some local people for the short period of time. You know, to kind of be that, you know, kind of constable type role in that in that very narrow sense.
Well, starting June one, you can have public gatherings that are less than fifty people, correct?
That's, that's what's being contemplated, we won't know, yeah, till the last week of May, but that's what they're suggesting could happen.
Right now, it's less than ten people, correct?
Correct, no more than ten.
Okay, so I mean, even so, that's the governor's orders, if the sheriff sees a large gathering of people, then it doesn't matter what what the town has said about that area, no, it's a violation of the executive order.
Agreed, I just, based on the history of Knox County, I doubt they're actually gonna enforce that out here at least.
Well, maybe, but I don't know, I have a little more faith in them, I guess.
Well, I mean, I shouldn't be jumping all over them, something hasn't happened yet, so I'll back that up, but I mean, we have, we have the rest of this month, we can see how it come, what the new orders are in June, I don't think anyone's gonna be using the quarries anytime soon, so we've got a little bit of time on that piece. But I think moving forward with signage up around the parks and having them ready for the quarries or putting up the quarries as well is a good idea. We should probably get on that sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I think those are usually like a two-week turnaround, so and most of the things we've seen, so we can still get those pretty close to, or at least before the end of June, right in May.
That's about perfect timing, too.
Yeah, if we could have them up around Memorial Day weekend, I think that would be perfect.
We may have an influx of people right around then.
I mean, shouldn't it be common sense that you're not cleaning the whole playground or cleaning a quarry, I mean, with all the stuff going on everywhere, I would think people should know before they even go to one of those places that it's not getting cleaned, or, I mean, do we really need that many signs, could we just put it on the website? Sign per place, and it seems like kind of a waste of money, I mean, people should know this, they've been going through it since Ma- March, that's just kind of the way I'm looking at it.
I I don't disagree, I just, we also continue to see people not following social distancing guidelines, not abiding by governor's rules, so in in an attempt to basically, I don't know, insulate the town a little bit, if we put those signs up. Because I know people, if it's on the website, on Facebook page, that does reach a lot of people, but some people who come out to the island might not have internet access and might not know that, and they go to the quarries and don't see a sign, and they think everything's fine, but I I agree, I mean, especially if you've been coming here for years, you would also know that we don't clean the quarries, we don't clean the playground, so that
Well, when they get here, they
That wasn't happening before, so.
When they get here, they should have two weeks to figure it out, so.
Well, that's, yeah. Let's hope everyone's actually following that, because from what I've heard, people aren't, so.
So then the other, other, I guess the other big one is the was the bathroom. So I think, you know, what we could find was, at a minimum, it should be cleaned every day, which, you know, we had done anyways, or have been doing in the past. You know, the fact that there's only one stall in there, you know, one person in there at a time is helpful, you know, other places where you're seeing the public restrooms closed is where they've got multiple stalls and multiple people going in and can't keep distancing while they're in there, so, you know, we have that going for us on on that regard, so I did put in, there never was, I don't believe, any dispensers installed in there for towels or soap, it was just paper towels on the counter and, you know, bottles of soap on the on the counter, so things I could could easily walk off and have in the past. To the point where we don't keep more than a couple rolls of things down there, so I threw in there just so you could see, I mean, it's not much for the dispensers and the and the soap, you gotta buy soap anyways, so you know, if we wanted to go ahead with that, the cleaning is something that, you know, we'll have to try and get you know, someone to do, and threw an estimate in there as to what that would likely cost for the month of June. Nothing crazy that we wouldn't already be doing anyways.
Right.
Well, I definitely think there should be soap and paper towel dispensers or a hand dryer, something.
Yeah.
Just loose paper rolls of paper towels and that's kind of a oh, I need paper towel, I guess I'll just go in here and take a roll.
Well, that that's what ha- happened every year, it's been open.
Yeah, I got, I mean, I would assume, I don't use the public restroom, but I I would think it would only be a smart choice.
Yeah.
And and cleaner to the have the dispensers.
All right, so that sounds okay, we can work on getting those things this week.
So I have a question about in that information you sent out, I couldn't find, I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer of what types of cleaning supplies they recommend, but when it said, go to this page to find the, you know, what's recommended, I could not find, it did not come up on what products exactly they recommended. It wasn't, I just couldn't find it, Andy, I don't know.
I also didn't click on that, because, you know, what we have is more than adequate generally to to be cleaning these things, so.
Right. I was just curious to to see what they had, and also, you know, what do they use for wiping down like the railings and such? I know you see hosing places, but in large areas.
Yeah, I mean, we've been doing it in our buildings and, you know, the staff have been just using disinfectant wipes for things like railings or some sort of bleach, you know, bleached, diluted bleach solution if you have to. But just any, you know, kind of disinfectant or wipe would do the trick.
Yep. Well, I was just, I just thought it was funny that it said, go here to find what products in it that they recommended, and I just couldn't find the answer, so that's fine, I mean, I already kind of, I already knew, but.
Sure, so then I guess if if that sounds okay, we can go ahead and say, get some of those things rolling this week and ordered and have up presumably, hopefully, all that up before Memorial Day weekend, the signs will be close, but we should, might be able to turn them around. The other two things, just to throw out there, not, you know, for any just final decisions on today, but just as a heads up, you know, is the flea market activity, so we've, Kathy reached out to us today, and so we're gonna follow up with her on on the flea market stuff, the use of the bandstand, I don't know, it doesn't generally get a whole lot of use, but just another town piece that came up in that whole area there and what goes on, just something that kind of came up, so we'll work with the organizers on on that. They still don't have much guidance out there for for farmers markets, I mean, there's some that are have been doing it in other places, and we can kind of see that, and we're still waiting to kind of hear what the state has for it. From what we can tell, flea market and farmer market, there's a distinction, you know, one's offering primarily food products, the other one not, and so in the places we've seen, the guidance, it is emphasis on farmer's market rather than flea market. You know, some of the ones that are flea market only, we haven't seen them post things that suggest they will be open at this point, they're waiting for guidance from the state, and when Mark reached out to the state at the DECD office, he was actually told that there was no guidance at this point for flea markets. But, you know, again, we can search for more clarity in that and work with the organizers on on what that looks like or could look like. The other thing was just general parking lot use, and I don't mean in the sense of parking to go into businesses, but, you know, the the parking lot, you know, as you might have seen it, you know, you see on the Fourth of July, and you know, that big activity. And we talked to the committee on a couple occasions so far, members of the committee so far, to kind of get an idea what what they're thinking, and, you know, everyone's kind of waiting to see what the governor's orders and guidances before final decisions are made. You know, but other things, like just gatherings and use of other parking lots, you know, whether it's the sales of the back of a vehicle, or you know, the dirt parking lot where the takeout cart is. Just general, just generally raised questions about, you know, reaching out to those people, make sure things are done safely and appropriately with distancing things. So I don't know if that warrants more discussion for you going forward, but we'll, I'll report back on anything that kind of comes up that may or may not be an issue, but just know that we're reaching out to those folks, though.
Yeah, good, I mean, as long as people are being safe, you know, if it becomes a problem, we'll address it then, but for the time being, you know, see how it goes.
Okay. There are other things, I did have a couple, you know, people that had reached out, I mean, prior to this meeting, just voicing, you know, concern for, you know, the potential for parks being closed and, you know, tried to emphasize, and you know, and as they pointed out, one person had pointed out, a lot of our parking areas are small enough that they don't really allow for a large amounts of, you know, people to gather in the parking areas, which is great, and generally, when we are on trails, we, you know, generally pass, say hi and pass, so I didn't get the feeling that, you know, we'd be looking to close trails, but that was a couple people had voiced some concern that maybe that might be where we were headed today, so I think it's safe to say that trails are are open and just be responsible when when people folks are out there. You know, as long as, as long as those, you know, acts continue in a responsible way, that there won't be any issues. That was about the only comments I had gotten today.
And that all makes sense.
Do you have any other questions or things to clarify in a future meeting or for today regarding any of this?
Do you do you know what the land trust is doing with all their trails and stuff that they have, are they putting signs up too, or is that anything that you've heard?
I can ask about signage, I know they've canceled their walks and talks through June. You know, they're waiting to see on on what happens after that, but in terms of people being able to go on the trails, you know, I haven't heard of any restrictions that way, I can double check on whether they're thinking about putting any signs up.
Anything else? Okay, Andy, do you have a report, or is that just?
I'll just in there as a format in case something came up, but I think I covered what I needed to.
Okay, um, does anyone do, any members have anything to report?
Yeah, I'd like to talk a little bit about the communication that I sent out to you all about the ferry service and urge you all to agree to take the lack of service to a higher level. Andy told me today about a state agency that addresses shortcomings in state ag- other state agencies, and I'd really like to take this to a higher level and see if we can restore the ferry service to, in fact, service and customer service and spend instead of it being a little regime that is just ruled over and we are treated like a well, I don't know, but it's not right.
Yeah. Well, I don't have a problem
Does anyone know if sorry, I didn't mean to jump in there, go ahead, Eric.
I don't have a problem with going to the next level, I think we've been more than patient and haven't been bugging the next level up too much about issues, but I think it's probably time we do.
I agree.
Yeah, the only thing I might recommend, I think I put in the email to you with that link of that Opega agency was to, or group would be to fulfill, you know, to to check in, you know, with members of the advisory board is, you know, would presumably call for a system-wide review. So assume that the advisory board might want to have, you know, just like you're looking for the the board as a total here, you know, for them to at least be aware that it might only be coming from Vinyl Haven, but you know, for potentially to have the advisory board kind of agree on that as well.
Well, I agree, I agree, and I will communicate with other ferry advisory board members, but unfortunately, or perhaps fortunately for them, the problem that I perceive is really with the ferry service and Vinyl Haven uniquely. The 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 customer service failures don't seem to be manifest anywhere else except to a somewhat lesser degree in North Haven, but no other ferry terminals are making their own rules and instituting their own rules without publicizing them and telling anybody about them, and you know, as I pointed out in my communication, when summer gets here, when a busy summer gets here, if that ever happens again, it's just a naturally and understandably stressful situation, and the notion that they seem to be going overboard to make it even more so is seem to me uniquely Vinyl Haven, I don't know why. But I will communicate with other board members.
That's what I was gonna say too, Phil, it seems like, I mean, Aliceboro complains and they get their way, North Haven, I mean, nothing seems to change up there. I'm not sure what happens in Swan's Island, but it seems like Vinyl Haven's usually the one getting the short end of the stick, we get the schedule changed, we get, you know, we get
Rate increases.
Rate increases and we get standbys taken away when we come up with a perfectly good alternative to the one that they had there, I thought, so, I mean, I I don't think we're gonna see much support from other other islands to go ahead with this, you know, cha- what is it, Opega, is that what it's called? Thank you, so I mean, I I think we should at least voice it to them and see what happens, I mean, probably won't get any satisfaction out of them, but at least we'll try.
Yeah, we have to try.
It's a, it's a, it's a reasonable courtesy, too.
I would agree as well that it seems to be, was being singled out, because I I personally witnessed one of the terminal employees in Rockland talking to another customer who I believe was from North Haven, and he went on and on about how terrible people from Vinyl Haven were and just could not say anything nice about any of us. So I think they have, some of them employees specifically look for any chance they can, this is my opinion, to essentially stick it to us when they get the opportunity, so I I don't disagree that it seems like we're being singled out.
Yeah. Okay, well, if it's all right with everybody else, I'll I'll begin that process, but I won't do anything without running by everybody for the approval.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
Fine by me.
Thank you, Phil.
Okay.
I think for my report, oh, it's obviously too late for this summer, but in the upcoming year, we've all been talking about the road up at the Meadow, and we've talked pretty casually about it, but I think it's time we take it more seriously and decide, you know, in the next year or two, how we want to address that problem, what we can do. You know, if that involves closing up the covert at the bridge or raising the road or both. But it's obviously a problem and it's obviously getting worse. So it's
I certainly agree.
Is that something that the engineer can look at after, you know, some of these other projects or while they're doing some of these other projects? I wouldn't think it would take a whole lot of, you know, engineering to fill the covert in or just to see, you know, what kind of mitigation strategies we could use.
I think we did, oh, sorry, Phil.
Go ahead.
I know, I was thinking that I recalled that we did talk briefly with Brent about that last year, that they they could definitely take a look at that at the culvert.
Yeah.
As long as it's not the same engineer who suggested we put that covert in in the first place.
I think it's important to note, you know, when the DOT folks were out last spring, prior to the road paving, you know, when they went and looked at all the culverts on the, on that side of the island, that section of the road. There was a gentleman that was with them that, as soon as he got out of the, out of his vehicle, you know, I kind of told him it floods, and he immediately said, this is down at least two feet, you know, from when he saw that project, that paving part of that project You know, I kind of told him it floods and he he immediately said, this is down at least two feet, you know, from when he saw that project, that paving part of that project before finish. And in fact, you know, when they looked underneath up through the culvert, under that section of that road, the the North Haven Road. And it in fact, you know, you could hardly see light at the other end of it, so that road, that section of that road has sunk that much. And compressed that culvert that much, so it's as much of a road, you know, settling issue as it as it is with the culvert. I don't know what it was like immediately after the culvert was, you know, less restricted and that project finished, but. It doesn't help that that section of road actually has also settled more. You know, I think we need to work, look to work with the DOT before we start incurring our own costs with the engineers and put the pressure on them as it's a state aid road.
But at, so at any rate, you know, I think that should become a. You know, more topless priority than, you know, which officials need to be contacted and. You know, if we're gonna, we're gonna have some pretty major construction equipment going across that road as well over the next year, so.
Right.
That's all I had. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, hearing none, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Alright, seconded by Phil Crossman. Eric Gaffney votes yes. Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Pam Alley?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes. Yes.
All right, thank you.